County Board of Representatives, Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to accept a minute as written for our August 6 meeting. Motion by Alderman Larry Hall about a second.
About a second.
Seconded by Alderman Tudor. Ruckaw, please.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Tudor.
Yes.
Alderman Hoppy.
Yes.
Alderman Kirwin.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Here.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Here.
Alderman Percy.
Yes.
All yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Another mayor's report tonight, the first time in the business showcase in downtown Chicago, I do not believe they're here tonight, but... Alright, so second upon agenda, I'd like to present Mr. John Ruling, Will County CEB, and I will talk to you about Will County, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your time. I'll be brief, but I certainly want to give you an update on what we're involved with at the Center for Economic Development. You have in front of you our annual report, which goes into some detail on our work plan, and I'll refer to that in a minute. And the other report you have is something that we've started producing over the last couple of months, and that's something we call a scorecard. And our board and our investors are always interested in what we're doing, and the nature of economic development and business recruitment and business expansion is all that you know, are somewhat a proprietary business, if you will, we have to respect the information that we get from our prospects and the businesses that we work with. But we also want to make sure we share good information on the projects. Sometimes economic development has a bit of a hocus-pocus to it, we'd rather share the information in whatever detail we can. So what you have on our scorecard, on the front page is sort of a synopsis of some of our activities, relative business recruitment and expansion. And so far this year, we've done extraordinary wealth. On page two, so far year-to-date, we've got investment on projects closed of over $130 million, creation of 224 jobs. The bottom half of the first page, though, is a representative act of projects we're working on. That is almost $270 million of additional investment in over 1,000 new jobs, these are new jobs to Will County. And I'm happy to say that as the economy has been turning over the last 18 months, especially in our industrial, transportation logistics sector, Wilmington has certainly come on the radar of a number of the major projects we've been working with, as I said, over the last 18 months. Tony has been great support for us, providing information that we pass on to the clients or representatives of the clients. And certainly the Ridge Port project is across areas of a number of major developments. And as some of you know, we didn't have a lot of activity out there for a while. And I think with the completion of the infrastructure investment, the water tower's a nice addition, and the challenges that we're seeing on our interstate highways, but also with the promise of potentially an Eliana Expressway connecting this part of the county with I-65 and Indiana, all bode very well for development opportunities in the greater Wilmington area. And I think we're just going to see that interest escalate. Couple of things, we have been very historically, very supportive of infrastructure investment. We all know that the inland port development around the intermodal yards has had both positive and some negative impacts, certainly on the local communities and the local roads. We are, in addition to the Eliana, however, we're very focused on making sure we get our fair share of federal, state money and some other pertinent projects for this area. We took a delegation to Washington DC this spring, met with the Federal Highway Administration, USDOT, we met with the US Department of Commerce and other, the US Department of Agriculture as well, talking about import-export activity and how Will County has definitely improved its position, if you will, in the global economy. We think that our infrastructure, our transportation investments that are occurring here, like Outing Ridge, Rail Park, the two intermodal yards, our opportunity to increase manufacturing exports from this part of the country are very strong. In the annual report, on the fourth page, in one, two, three, four, you'll see the right-hand side, our target industries. We've been focusing on what are the best opportunities for business growth in the county over the next 15, 20 years. Knowing that transportation logistics is going to be a pretty important part of that, we're also interested in recruiting higher-paying jobs in the area. And we've identified advanced manufacturing, food processing, life sciences, and energy as what we see as opportunities for us in the future. And I think this area, with the crossroads of not only the interstates, railroads, but pipelines, we were talking about that a little earlier, the flow of oil, gasoline, natural gas, we are truly at sort of the nexus of the country for a lot of the energy projects. We think we can see more investment, more jobs, higher-paying jobs, we're very excited about that. But also back to the transportation infrastructure, one of our key projects, we have two projects, what we consider projects of national regional significance, apart from the Eliana Expressway. One is adding lanes to I-80, completing the add lanes from Route 30 all the way to Brandy County. We think that will be a big reliever on local roads if we get that done, with or without the Eliana. And then the second one, which is more problematic from the funding standpoint, is the 55 improvement south of I-80. Adding lanes, rebuilding the bridges at the Displanes River, and then six lanes all the way down to the county line and beyond at some point in time. But there's going to be a lot of heavy lifting around that project, you talk to the state, they don't really want to talk about that project. The feds certainly are aware of the necessity of making these investments in this part of the country. But we all see what's going on, just to update the maintenance on the bridges and the impact that has on us today. As much as we want to see new bridges crossing the Displanes on 55, you know, what happens to the traffic during that construction is nightmarish at best. Another reason not to wait, if you continue to see truck traffic from these projects flowing on to Interstate 55 going northbound and then product coming south on 55, the truck, the freight traffic on that road is just going to escalate. And quite frankly, what we would not like to see, our projects not come here because of traffic congestion on I-55. The Eliana can help with some of that, adding lanes on I-80 will help with some of that. Quite frankly, 55 itself is a critical piece of the national transportation infrastructure, and we really need to focus on that as we move our agenda forward for transportation investment. In addition to that, we're spending a lot of time looking at our workforce issues. We know that employers today are having a challenging time finding qualified skilled workers. A little ironic because of our chronic high unemployment rate right now, yet if you look out at our processing companies, our energy companies, they're seeing an aging workforce, they're fighting that, they fear that they're not going to be able to fill these jobs with young people coming up, for whatever reason, not attracted to, you know, that type of career. We think that there's some opportunities in making sure that our education system and our communities at large understand that, you know, we need to keep workers in these plants so they can keep bringing home paychecks, buying trucks, paying taxes, buying homes. And so we're working with our higher education institutions right now and developing a plan that will be focused on providing more interns for some of these manufacturing and petrochemical laboratories. You know, maybe a kid doesn't want to necessarily just launch into a career working on a pipeline project or in a manufacturing facility, but maybe through an intern program, we can get them interested, they can learn a little bit more about that career opportunity. And at the same time, some of our major employers might be able to test out some of the young workers coming up. So we'll be looking at securing some grants to help with that program, working with the Workforce Investment Board. So we're pretty excited about some of the things we're looking at from a workforce development standpoint. There's a lot of other things I could talk about, but I maybe just let it open for some questions. John, on our workforce, how do we fare in the area as far as Will County, do we fare fairly well? Actually, we do. You know, what's interesting is, you know, over the last 15 years, as you know, Marty, we've diversified our economy pretty well. And I think what that's done is, you know, we were able to promote Will County as a net positive job center. You know, even though a lot of our workers that live in Will County still leave the county every day for their job, over 55 percent, you know, we now have almost 60 percent of the jobs in the county being filled by people coming into the county every day from other locations. So, you know, that gives us a good blend, and I think employers are able to find, certainly quantity of workers. It gets back down to, do they have the skills, and if they don't, can we get them the skills? But we have yet to have a problem with an employer taking us off the list because of workforce issues. That has not happened in the 12 years I've been here, so that's definitely a good thing. Good questions, comments, maybe you didn't address something you were...
I'll make a comment to the position we keep hearing about the Eliana and the Center for Economic Development. What are some of the next steps the center's going to be looking at, especially when we have CMAP and others questioning that? Maybe a little update on what's the next initiative you could take?
Well, good question, Tony, we're very concerned about this project. You know, we made it through the Tier 1 environmental study review, we've got the record of decisions from the federal government in literally record time, 19 months, 47 mile, brand-new divided interstate highway with all the interchanges, all the environmental studies, potential impacts, the impacts on local communities. And IDOT and NDOT are on track to probably finish Tier 2 within probably another 18 or 19 months, if not sooner. And of course, three days before the comment period ended on the Tier 1 filing, the environmental lawsuit was filed. We fully expected that, we think the environmental lawsuit itself is very weak. It's fairly standard, I've seen this throughout my career, the environmental community. And I think it's a good thing, quite frankly, it sounds odd coming from me, but, you know, if they have concerns and questions that need further exploration, let's do it. I mean, I don't think the supporters of this project feel like we need to build a road that is environmentally improper or unsafe or doing damage. It's certainly not our position, there's checkmarks in place to make sure that doesn't happen, and everybody has a right to be concerned or even be against a project like this. The more critical thing right now is the CMAP position, they've released an internal document completed by the staff, submitted to their Transportation Committee, which then will themselves come up with essentially a thumbs up or thumbs down on this project in terms of including it into the five-year transportation plan. So it will be able to go forward at the federal level, without that approval, it cannot happen. The Transportation Committee will submit their findings to the CMAP Board and the MPO Policy Committee at their regular joint meeting in October. And the comment period that we have to, as a community, as a number of communities and businesses, including labor, we have until September 3 to comment on this most recent internal memo, and it challenges some of IDOT's findings in their study to date. It questions the cost estimate for the road, and it also questions whether or not the economic impact will be as strong as IDOT's numbers show. And then thirdly, that CMAP seems to be concerned that we don't know how to do land planning out here, and they're challenging whether or not our communities are ready for such a road. You know, we counter that with the reality that I know our organization has been working with, at the very local community level, on something that looked and felt like the Eliana Expressway going all the way back to the early 1990s. And I think our communities have certainly contemplated such a bypass for the Chicago area coming in the southern part of Will County for many years. And our counter to that is, we're certainly ready, you know, we're big people down here. I think we can understand what the impacts of a project like this can and will be, and I think we can do appropriate planning. I think Wilmington and Manhattan, Esher, Tianton are all, always have been considering this kind of a road. And I think the regional planners that come down there and say, "We don't know what we're doing," quite frankly, is unfair. We are, we have created a sort of a grassroots community support group, we're not getting into the weeds on this, we're not saying this interchange should be here, or this is where the alignment should be. We're supporting the project as a whole because of the value, not just to Will County and the communities, but to the whole region. And quite frankly, we see this as a project of national significance, and Washington sees it that way. So the first thing that we're doing is, we've got this group created, we haven't given it a name yet that everybody can kind of hang on to. Right now, it's called the Eliana Support Committee, we invited Wilmington to participate in that. And we have our second meeting this Thursday, and we're putting together basically a letter-writing campaign with CMAP between now and October 3 to let them know that the communities that work on it support this project in some fashion. And quite frankly, we think CMAP should make a pension if we want to, so that's kind of where we're at with that. We did the same thing for the 355 extension, and it was a long fought battle, we saw a 10-year delay in that project. It's like I mentioned earlier, with the costs that were added on to that project, as a result of that, probably close to 25 percent in terms of added costs. And then we had to go over the bridge and be higher atop of that. You know, I think it's unfair for communities that are in the path of this road to suffer through a long, prolonged review process. And I think it does more harm than good in addition to reasonable costs. And so that's kind of where we're at with that. The airport, you know, who would have guessed that we would have seen the legislature to pass a bill and then the governor sign it that would allow for IDOT to be the public partner, the public-private partnership for this project? And for all of the years of wrangling between Jesse Jackson Jr., Congressman Jackson, Will County, over who's going to control this airport, I think this is a tenable solution. But our position on this has always been, until we fund a new user, it's not going to get better. It won't be a waste of public money on this project. I think the public-private partnership solution almost guarantees that we're not going to build a white elephant. There will not be private investors stepping up with literally hundreds of millions of dollars unless there's a viable user or users for this airport. And our belief right now is that the airport probably will open as a cargo facility first, and eventually a small commercial passenger terminal. But we won't, nothing will happen out there until we find a user, that's basically what it is.
Just one other question, regards to the economic development, is, you say, you see market improvement. Is it still continuing, as the expression from Rover Ridge, the site locators still coming, you guys regularly looking for potential areas within the Will County area?
Yeah, you know, part of our problem right now, Mayor, quite frankly, is, you know, what's not happening in Springfield is not helping us. You know, we are being, you know, every time we're chasing a project, whether it be an existing company expanding or a new one coming into the county, they look at all levels of the environment, they're looking at, obviously, the global market impacts, business decisions today, the national situation, but more and more, what's happening at the state level, the local level, has more impact on decision-making for these projects than I've seen before. And that includes things like unfunded pensions, escalating income tax rates, inability of leadership to really get their arms around the key issues of the state. You know, the good news for us is that Will County is almost sort of seen as an island of success in that. A lot of it has to do with our transportation assets, but a lot of our success also is due to local leadership in our local village halls and at the county level. You know, leadership is seen by business today as being a very important dog, and whether or not they want to make an investment in a community, if they don't feel the support is there. You know, they have other options, they have other options. There's over 6,000 economic development organizations in this country, and at the end of the day, there's only probably about 25,000 or 3,000 projects of size that make a difference, and we're all competing, you know, pretty much for the same kind of deal. But I think, I think right now, we're holding our own, long answer to the question, it's a good story to tell. Any questions?
Probably more education on, as an investor, which we are with the Michigan Center, and it's one reason why you're out here. In our investment, and your investors with your budget on it, you know, maybe just a quick, maybe a second elevator pitch, how are you doing like currently in operations?
Good question. Financially, we're doing very well, we've hit all of our budget numbers since the recession started, something we really didn't anticipate. Our budget and revenues are in line with what we had hoped for, and our expenses remain under. The good news is, we've been able to hire a new economic developer to let you raise that. Scott Fleming, we brought on early in May, comes to us from Michigan via Texas, two states that are very resonant in economic development. He's a journeyman economic developer, he's been around the block a few times, and I know you've worked with him. His main charge is to work with our communities, that is something that we've not been able to do, we've not been able to reform that position for a number of years, but we've been able to rearrange some things and make sure that we had funding for that position. So he'll be getting a lot more service from us through SCAD and his operations. And, you know, I think that's what we want to do, we want to be your partner as you go out into the business world and seek investment and do jobs and do companies, and I think that's what we're all here to get accomplished. So it's good news for us, we appreciate it.
We may not see Scott as much, but I know telling the mayor, there's a lot of communication back there.
I'll make sure he gets out of here.
You know, out here is not so out here.
He may not be here in front of the council, but we've had other stuff, when we had the project going on, over by ITL, he was out there, so, no, he's been out.
And with his expertise and his travels throughout the economic world, he's also bringing in retailer perspective, which is part of this center we've always talked about, you know, is the Center for Economic Development, basically for all the big businesses. Scott's going to be an added pleasure to here with his background. And he's already talked about some of our retail opportunities here, we're working on with marketing and branding our community, so...
Yeah, I was asking at the end of the day about Kohl's project that we heard about, and I said, "You going to be there?" He says, "Well, I have to do, two weeks ago, I had lunch with the senior VP of Real Estate for Kohl's." He didn't even tell me, but, so his access on the retail side is a lot better than I did, so I've been out of that game for a while. So that's, that's good for us.
And as the added benefit, when we ask for, I mean, we know our investment with the CEB, I think it's a preparation that we need to move forward and continue providing our investment with the CEB.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Alright, next item on the agenda is relative to the Eliana Expressway. As we all know, we've been dealing with this for some time now. I can tell you that we've, I went through a lot on the Eliana, regards to Eliana, is it really directly impacts our community. I've had residents come to me that don't want it in town, as much as I've had people to come to me to say they do need it, we do need it in town. We all understand that we've looked at the economic benefit of this, so we also understand that there are challenges with Eliana, there's things we need to do, but not only the citizens of Wilmington, but those that surround our community know where we stand as we relate to the Eliana Expressway. As I mentioned several weeks ago, we were working on putting out a resolution together, we have the resolution out before you guys tonight for passage. Keep in mind, it's just a resolution. One of our big, strong points in regards to Eliana has been the Old Chicago Road Interchange. It's been a long battle with IDOT, in fact, in the last public hearing, they had taken it off, the proposed interchanges. We've made ourselves known that it's better economically viable. In fact, they, as they've done the polling and stuff like that, they recognize that as the most frequent, you lose actually 1,000 trucks per day on Route 53, which is really the primary goal and objective of the Eliana, to minimize the truck traffic or freight traffic everywhere on our local roads. And our local roads are Route 53 and Route 102. Also in the resolution, we recognize that Route 52 is Route 50, Old Chicago Road, the state road. So we're also making that known that we'd like to see, not only with the interchange of Old Chicago Road, the progression of looking at Old Chicago Road as this truck route in itself, to further eliminate the impact of freight traffic on our local roads. And you see that expressed in the, in the resolution as well. We also wanted to make sure that we recognized the concern that the Will County Preservation Committee had in regards to the potential impact on the homes and stuff that came here. For those of you with buildings in Congress committee meeting last week, Sandy Vasco, who's the chairman of the Will County Preservation Group, was here, and kind of highlighted some of those homes and their concerns, and he said that we show our support for them. We also want to recognize the value of our wildcat field and how it relates to our community as far as user recreational services. And again, we wanted to show that we did not support anything remotely with regards to the Riley Road Interchange, as it was produced as an alternate to Route 53. We continue to express our best economic value for us and the best way to pull those trucks off our local roads, which we're dealing with quite severely right now today. We become the southern north of Santa Point, as everybody knows, especially those living on 53 and 102, they see a number of trucks a day, travel 53 and 102 every single day to get to their destination. So at this time, I'd like to present the resolution to you guys for passage tonight, show our support in regards to the Eliana Expressway and to make our concerns known as it deals with the city of Wilmington specifically.
Alright, I'll move to approve Resolution Number 2013-13, a resolution on the Eliana Expressway.
A motion by Alderman Percy, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman, any further discussion? Ruckaw, please.
Alderman Percy?
Yes.
Alderman Kirwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Hoppy?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Wait, yes, motion passes.
Also on the side note, in regards to this, as we talked about the CMAPs and the challenges we face with the CMAP and their potential, we'll basically try to put something together, but I'll ask all the Aldermen, and I'll even reach out to our business community.
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 2013-13, a resolution on the Iliana Expressway.
Motion by Alderman Persick, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman. Any further discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Hoppy?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
A.T.S. motion passes.
Also on the side note, in regards to this, as we talked about the CMAPs and the challenges we face with the CMAP and their potential, we'll basically try to put something together, but I'll ask all the Aldermen, and I'll even reach out to our business community to ask to put a letter campaign together to see Matt, show them that our support and our needs, that they really need to support the V3 drought, which relates to Iliana Expressway. Bring that forward to the committee. All right. Citizens comments, do we have any citizens' comments tonight? Planning and zoning commission, let's see, before you have planning and zoning, last Thursday, the planning and zoning commission had their motion on, had their, on the public hearing on the variance request in regards to our police station. Just kind of highlighted, I happened to be there when the ideas and turmoil was going on. We did have a couple residents there with questions. They were actually residents that designed alongside where the proposed police station was going. The question they asked was in regards to lighting and drainage. As our engineer told them that both those concerns will actually be eliminated, their drainage will actually improve, the way that we got, I guess, a little verb there before it goes into that retention pot, that'll kind of be leveled out. They have a couple lights that are in the parking lot now that they were concerned with. They're in the part of Silver Crosses area, those will also be eliminated as well. So they're very pleased with what we're progressing on that, just wanted to make that note. The, as you know, the committee did make recommendations in regards to landscaping, the potential of putting trees and shrubs in the area behind the PD, as well as making sure that that corner, the landscaping, there's really no landscaping at all, so to speak, to minimize the potential of, I guess, when a dragon tracks, it's a flag, their flag spot. Other than that, the planning and zoning commission did approve the variance. So we got the ordinance on that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do. I move to approve ordinance number 13-08-20-01, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Wilmington, Illinois, as pertains to the property at Robert P. Wyman Drive, Wilmington, Illinois, to grant a variance to set back requirements.
Motion by Alderman Larry Hall, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Van Dyne, any further discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Hoppy?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
A.T.S. motion passes.
Their next scheduled meeting is scheduled for Thursday, September 5th at 6:00 PM. Committee reports building grounds, parks, health and safety, Alderman Persick, Alderman Van Dyne.
Mr. Mayor, our next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, September 11th, 2013 at 6:00 PM.
Water, Sewer, Streets, Alley's, Alderman Stuter, Alderman Kirby.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 2013-14, the resolution for improvement by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code, -2013 Fall Motor Fuel Tax Project as recommended by the city engineer.
Motion by Alderman Kerwin, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Stuter, any discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Hoppy?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Hoppy?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
A.T.S. motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, the next scheduled meeting is September 11th, 2013 at 5:30 PM.
Police and ESTA, Alderman Stuter, Alderman Stuter.
Mr. Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, September 10th, 2013 at 5:30 PM.
Finance Administration, Land Acquisition Committee, Dido on the chair.
I move to approve the accounts payable report dated August 14, 2013, in the amount of $393,239.69, and the July 2013 collector's report in the amount of $268,779.24.
Motion by Alderman Stuter, do we have a second?
I second it.
Second by Alderman Hoppy, any discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Hoppy?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
All yes, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I have the next. I move to accept the 2013 financial audit as presented by MAC and Associates.
Motion by Alderman Stuter, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Persick, any discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Hoppy?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
All yes, motion passes.
Another one. I move to approve the William Scotsman Incorporated Agreement for the sale and installation of a new modular building, Wilmington Police Department, in the amount not to exceed $1,549,930, subject to receipt of funding from Ridgeport and closing on the Silver Cross property.
Motion by Alderman Stuter, do we have a second?
I second it.
Second by Alderman Hall, any discussion? I just want to say, dealing with William Scotsman, I really, you know, appreciate you guys' patience and diligence with this. I said we're right there, 95% I would say, despite for the funding, but I'd like, you know, to say thank you for all the guy, you know, your patience in working with us throughout this whole process. Thank you very much. Roll call both, please.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Hoppy?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
All yes, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I have the next three. I move to approve the SAI-SER bid in the amount of $74,917.25 for the site improvements for the new Wilmington Police Department, subject to receipt of funding from Ridgeport and closing on the Silver Cross property.
Motion by Alderman Stuter, do we have a second?
I second it.
Second by Alderman Hoppy, any discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Hoppy?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
All yes, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Mancoso Construction Bid for Foundation Flatwork in the amount of $73,734 for the new Wilmington Police Department, subject to receipt of funding from Ridgeport and closing on the Silver Cross property.
Motion by Alderman Stuter, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Hall, any discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Hoppy?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
All yes, motion passes.
One more, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the Interior Image Group Service Proposal for the procurement of furniture, fixtures and equipment in the amount of $122,381.19 for the new Wilmington Police Department, subject to receipt of funding from Ridgeport and closing on the Silver Cross property.
Motion by Alderman Stuter, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kerwin, any discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Hoppy?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
All yes, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, September 17th, 2013 at 6:00 PM.
Orders and License Committee, Alderman Hoppy, Alderman Hall.
Mr. Mayor, our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, September 10th, 2013 at 6:00 PM.
Let's see, first on collective bargaining, Alderman Hall, Alderman Persick, we will have executive session, so let's defer to that. City administrators, report, Mr. Graff.
Mayor, we've got a circus coming down on Monday, so, after North Island, we did have a pre-con meeting with all the services, our building department, and with the circus, people on conference call. So everything's pretty well ironed out, and services for that, ESTA wants to provide some parking and crossing on 53 from the South Island. Park District is really project manager on this, contracts are front with them. They've met all the requirements for insurance and all that, the big talent's coming in. The one thing is, there will be elephants, two elephants are coming in. They will be on our North Island, in the grassy area. They can do assurance, and they will probably be some minor grass damage, but they will pick up all the, all the, whatever you want to call it, the dogs, and they will clean everything up as they label it. So they do bring in about 80 workers in in regards to this, so it's an operation that's been going on for five generations, as we're told by the family. Coming from Bayless Hills on Sunday to us on Monday, and then Pontiac on Tuesday, Wilmington and going into their schedule, a pretty traveling circus. It's going to be interesting. The one thing they did, they did recommend is raising of the tent is probably a very unique one in a lifetime to see, and with all the pulleys and everything like that, with all the people. So it's the old way of raising, the raising of the tent. Should go up about noon. It will be inspected, so that we are, with special events and everything else that's going on in the world, we want to make sure safety first before any public comes in. So the fire department and police department will be working with the building department, and everything will be inspected before they come in. One thing that is an advantage with this circus is they're self-sufficient. They're bringing in their own generators, they're bringing in their own water bodies, they're bringing in their own transfer subpoles, take care of all that, so there is no cost to the Park District or the city in regards, except there's emergency services, in regards to that. What a community benefit for young and old to go see a circus in their backyard, so.
When is it, what, Sunday or Monday?
Monday is the, the tent raising at noon, and 4:30 is the matinee, and 7:30 is the evening. It's about a two-hour show. The tent does have a capacity of 1,600 people, so they're hoping to fill the tent two times, possibly, if they can. As they, as they say, they, most communities want to enjoy it. And they say they are looking for, you know, a guest to introduce the circus, so the mayor, the mayor wants to wear a t-shirt. They wanted me to make that offer in front of the city council, maybe a little encouragement for that, and the mayor to open up the circus.
You know, I've never turned down an opportunity like that.
That's my thought, I said, ladies and gentlemen.
I just don't that doubt. How are they handling?
Extra police protection for their.
Right now, we staffed it accordingly. We're expecting the 1,600, even though we will have no knowledge of how many people until the day of. They don't track their ticket sales until like hours before the first show. So we put on extra officers, I have two staff the street, two extra officers, and I'll be out there with some.
Are you going to park a shuttle bus somewhere, or are you going to get everybody down there?
Well, we're, they're anticipating the South Island with Catfish Days and with North Island parking.
It's the same traffic pattern, it's kind of like Catfish Days, does people, they'll try to gear people towards the South Island. ESTA will be out there on Route 23, correcting traffic across the, no pedestrian, traffic across the street on Route 23. So it's pretty much, I think, the same plan.
One thing we did talk about, Mr. Mayor, is running South Parks, through the South Park, exit only through the South Gate. So we'll run that as a one-way. I think Renee was wanting to make contact with Free Press, so we'll publicize it that way. We could put traffic control at Kaler 102 if necessary, and that way we won't have congestion coming onto 53. Especially with the matinee, because when the people leave for the matinee and people coming in and parking, they want to have that traffic flow going on. Plus, as we all know, the parks are cut through, so there'll be signs to go up at this point. The other thing is, they did comply with the police department's request that all employees must sign off on a waiver for background checks, sex offender registration and all that, so they're going to do that right at the beginning. When they come in here at 8 o'clock, they'll provide the forms, and they'll give enough time for a police department to write all their names, make sure they don't have any, you know, characters that we wouldn't want in our community, you know, a lot, so, especially our youth.
They still allow people to come in from that area, South Island, just not make it a thorough for example?
Correct. There's not going to be any exits to 53. It'll be one-way out. So Ridgeport, there, if you haven't gone out there, Lorenzo Road's going to be striped pretty soon, probably within a week if that, if not sooner, but definitely the goal is by Labor Day week, Lorenzo Road will be complete. You know, it's an impressive sight when you come off of Lorenzo and the interchange is coming out of Lorenzo coming across, and you start seeing the picture now of the ability for going vertical, seeing those buildings combined the ground and the corn, and we hope very soon. Deer Creek and North Island, remember you guys asked a bid on that, and the North Island parking lot will hopefully get started next week after the circus is gone, and there's some culvert work that is being done, and then we'll be working on the island. And then Deer Creek's improvements will get started either late next week, some of the work, or definitely after the first, the first of the month. We'll work on that. The US Cold Storage Interchange, our intersection, we're waiting for final approval for Route 53 and PDL Road moving forward. I'm going to go to bid on that from the IDOT. Looks like we'll get that approval hopefully in the next week or so, and get that thing out the bed before the fall hits. At least get some of the work started at 53 before we can pay a bill road. So I think that's a positive, and US Cold Storage is anxious to see that happen, and I'm still talking about the expansion of Phase 3. If we can demonstrate we're going to get the road done, it's going to start in this fall. Otherwise, it'll be a skirt project for the expansion. So we got everybody pushing for it, working with the county too on that project. No cost to the city, it's all coming from the US Cold Storage, the Economic Development Program Funds, and the county is participating monetarily, some of the costs they had, that they wanted for the right turn lane to be extended. So we're at no cost in regards to projects that we've administered in time. My project will be great. The Route 53 and South Arsenal Road, we're waiting for some more decantation, but we did get approval from IDOT for reimbursement for that project, the Economic Development Fund Program. So on the bill list, you can see payments going out to ESI, and Kim's been working with Kobe on that process, just might be seamless when Robert was here, payments coming, payments going out, IDOT reimbursing, and everybody made whole on that project, so. We don't believe we'll probably start on that project. We're likely temporary lights up, is what we're asking for, temporary traffic lights before the winter gets here. We're still waiting for approvals of those. LA Transport is moving forward, they're wanting to be going into another possible expansion. They're already adding on five more acres that they had in the back of the lot, that they're doing improvements for, because they're running out of space, and then they're in discussion to look at further expansion before the spring. And they keep hiring one or two people every couple of weeks for filling the jobs. There is 600 truck movements a day coming out of there, going in and out of that place, so remember it's a 24-hour operation, so it's, if you're around there, you'll see a lot of activity going on there. That's the empty.
You got something to add? You mentioned everything else, but you didn't say anything about what happens. When are they going to start now?
No, I think you're, you approved the, approved their name now, it's Kobe, when they're going to start?
Yeah, you just approved the resolution, I'll have the books sent out to the state tomorrow, and wait for approval on that, and so once we get approval, three weeks for a bid, and then we're forward.
And how are we doing on the one-way street?
I talked to Gary about that, and it's something I've done, or, it's like, they were doing a lot of asphalt work, so I've been having a hard time getting him, basically, November 26th, I see, so really need to be done.
Yeah, you see him out there, the new roller is out there working. Picture today that I rolled over the pan, just might put it on the, be it on the website or put it up on the, your papers. Guy's working hard. Guys are working hard.
Attorney's report, Mr. Herbert.
Thank you.
No report tonight.
You.
All right, in motion for executive session?
I'm making motion, going to executive session at 7:50, for personnel, collective bargaining and land acquisition?
No collective bargaining, personnel.
Correction.
Yeah. All right, motion by Alderman Hall, do we have a second?
I second.
Second by Alderman Hoppy, roll call both, please.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Hoppy?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
All right, any motion to my executive session?
I'm making a motion to come out of executive session at 8:25.
Motion by Alderman Hall, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Stuter, roll call both, please.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Hoppy?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
All yes, motion passes.
Let's see, executive session, Alderman Hall, strike both.
For personnel, we, not rest, man.
Make a motion.
I make a motion to authorize the staff to hire a Class 3.
Advertise.
Advertise.